Good morning. Oh, five seconds. Morning, commissioners. Happy Tuesday. Yeah. All right, so commissioners, we have a full agenda today. To start us off in the morning, we have a couple presentations and updates. But before we even get to those, I would actually like to give our city clerk an opportunity to share a little update and summary of how the primary election went. So our clerk's very first election here in the city of Grand Rapids.
It went.
So Joel Phyllisson.
Oh, more specific.
I know, I know. So Joel, five minutes. Phyllisson, how'd it go?
Sure. No, I think as a whole, it went very well. Going into this primary election, looking at historical numbers for the city of Grand Rapids, in every two-year election, usually it's been 15%, 11%. Because of the interest that's been going on in national politics, and having spirited, I'll say spirited, open primaries this year for governor, I expected maybe 20%, and we were at 28%. So we were seeing a higher-than-normal absentee's, but we had a group that was going out door-to-door canvassing, getting people to sign up for absentee's. So we had about 1,200 absentee ballots that didn't come in. But a good number of those who requested absentee ballots asked for, and ended up going to the polls too, because they were surrendering their ballots or filling out an affidavit. But what that did do was the numbers that we had ordered for ballots, so if you saw news come out, Oakland County, they're running out of ballots. We were getting to a point where we were getting close in a few precincts. We never did run out of ballots, but we did have to run some of our extra stock that we were using for duplicating in the absentee counting board out to precincts. So there was a delay in a couple precincts of getting ballots out to them. So looking at those numbers, we made a prediction of how many ballots to order, and we hit it right on, and some we had extra ballots. So it was amazing to see the turnout for that. But it wasn't, there weren't really a lot of lines during the day. It was just, talking to the chairman, it was just steady. It was, there was just constantly always somebody voting. We did have a couple issues with a couple of the tabulators. It was a little bit humid last Tuesday. And a couple of those gymnasiums, like Garfield Park Gym, a couple of the schools that don't have air conditioning or didn't have them running. It was a little warm in there for the workers. And the ballots can get a little bit of moisture and gets a little funny. So we did have to change out a couple tabulators. So we'll make sure with our vendor to make sure that they're all top-notch, ready to go for November. We had some challenges with some of the workers. Some of, it seemed to be the season for hips and knees for a lot of our election workers. So this summer, so they'll be back this November working. So we implemented a whole bunch of new election inspectors this year, getting them fully trained was a little bit interesting. And so what I did learn is, I learned a lot on Election Day as far as things that we need to watch for training and make sure that we're understanding what's happening. I did make sure that the mayor knew when we were having issues, especially when the Grand Rapids press and others were calling and saying, "We're hearing this." So I wanted to make sure that our communications team and the mayor knew what was going on, just in case. And my bonus was, I got to see Commissioner Lanier in her precinct. So that was kind of like a bonus point for the day. So my goal for Election Day was to hit all 77 precincts or 67 locations. I made it just over half. Sorry, first ward commissioners, I never made it west of the river. But I did make it to some of your precincts that were east of the river. So I made it to Buchanan and Burton and Cedar Chavez. So I did make it to some of the precincts. I had this grand plan. I started up in the second ward, I was way up on the north side, and they said, "We're having a problem down at one of the precincts on the southeast side." So I was hitting Rush Hour all the way to get up. With Franklin closed and wealthy, it was interesting to get around the city on Election Day. However, shout out to my staff, they did great. 3-1-1 did a great job working to, the 3-1-1 program we have is, that department is fantastic of backing us up with phone calls and getting information through. And I think, I haven't looked at the numbers yet. We had, by the way, it was 38,000 voters on Election Day. So that's the big number for the day. And I haven't looked at the numbers, but from what I was looking at as far as spoiled ballots, usually we have high spoiled ballots because people couldn't figure out the cross vote. And I think between the communications department and our office and everybody saying, "Stay in your lane," and the spoiled ballot seemed to be a lot lower than it has been in the past. Because that's a lot of ballots that would be used up, potentially giving us ballot issues if we had a lot of spoiled ballots. So as a whole, I think it was a good day. I think I got home at four o'clock.
In the morning.
In the morning. But we did beat Cascade Township.
Little friendly clerk competition.
Clerk competitions who gets in. So, and then the county canvases. Remember unofficial results are online right now. The county has just got to City of Grand Rapids right now. So now I'm getting texts from the election director saying, "We're to Grand Rapids." So we had one precinct that has to be re-tabulated. The precinct at West Catholic High School, their tabulator wasn't working. So voters voted in, so their results will change from what it was unofficially on Election Day. Because they had about 100 or so ballots that were in the auxiliary bin, so they'll be re-tabulated today. So remember, everything is unofficial till it's official.
Right.
So, so as a whole, and then I finished off the week by going to the Institute for Healing Racism. They're facing racism class, the chamber, on Thursday and Friday. So it was an emotional and exhausting week, but it was a fantastic week for growth and learning, so.
Well, thank you. I will add my thanks to not just you, but your entire department and 3-1-1, everyone who worked so hard to make the primary election a success. I had a great meeting with the clerk this week and got a rundown. And I know you already are creating a list for November of things you're going to improve. And then we know that the ballot in November is going to be a long one. And so we'll work again with the communications department to do a "no before you go" campaign to try to get ahead of it and make sure that people know before they get in that ballot box what's on the ballot. So, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner.
All right. Okay, so that will take us to our next presentation. So I see Rebecca Hoffman there. So Rebecca is here with us this morning to talk about the Historical Commission presentation on "Keep on the Grass." So Rebecca, you want to come forward and share with us some information about this?
Sure. Bear with me for one minute to just be able to boast a bit about the Historical Commission. You may know that we now, we used to publish books solely. And now we have, we've had a history Grand Rapids website for 10 years now. And five years ago, we spun off another website that specifically deals with the history of the furniture industry in Grand Rapids. And we're happy to say that we are averaging about 21,000 hits a month on those two websites. So that's a little bragging. I want to introduce Christine and Tom, Christine Byron, excuse me, and Tom Wilson, who, if not for them, this book would not have been possible. We had been talking for a few years that we wanted to do a book on the park system. But as you know, unless you have someone behind you to make it happen, it doesn't happen. But we had Chris and Tom, and they helped us make it happen. And Chris is going to say a few words about that.
Great, thank you.
Well, it certainly wasn't just us. All of the Historical Commissioners worked on the parks book. Each was assigned a different park. And so it was really a case of us all working together. We got wonderful historical photos from the city archives, as well as from the Grand Rapids Public Library, and then some historical postcards as well. We also had a couple people that went out and took contemporary photos for some of the newer parks that we didn't have historical photos for. So we're happy to give a copy to each of the commissioners. We are so proud of our parks and the rich legacy that we have. And there hasn't been anything really done on the history of the parks since a little booklet came out in 1960. So we're very happy about that. The official book launch is going to be Thursday, the 16th. The Friends of, we partnered with the Friends of Grand Rapids Parks, and they have their 10th anniversary celebration at their Green Gala this Thursday. So that's going to be the official book launch. And then they will be in the bookstores on Friday, on the 17th. So we hope you're pleased with it. We certainly are. Thank you.
Thank you. This is beautiful.
And I just wanted to add, if you notice, the book is dedicated to Charles Garfield.
Yes.
And it has the etching off his memory stone that says, "Useful citizen, lover of trees."
I love that. I love that.
And they will be on sale if you would like more copies.
Great. This is fantastic. Thank you, thank you all so much. And I'll add my thanks to, for your service on the Historical Commission. That's an important job, and it takes a lot of time and energy. And I know you give countless hours to that. So thank you so much.
Thank you for your support.
Thank you, thank you. This is lovely. I'll be ordering many of these. All right, that'll take us to our next presentation, and we'll have our Parks Director kick this off. This is a presentation on the River for All, River Design Guidelines, and River Restoration Update.
Good morning, Mayor and Commissioners. David Markwart, Director of Parks and Recreation. Today, we've got a presentation and update with you on the River for All Design Guidelines. This is a project that is in coordination with the Grand Rapids Whitewater Rapids Restoration Project Work that has been taking place. This is a partnership with Downtown Grand Rapids Incorporated, Tim Kelly, and Grand Rapids Public Museum. My friends are in the back of the room there as well. This is a split process for all of us, ensuring that we are designing these river edges in a way that are complementary to the Rapids Restoration work. So together, we hired Wenken Associates out of Denver, Colorado, to work with us on these design guidelines. Bill Wenk is here to present on behalf of the team. And Richard Bishop is here to share an update on the Whitewater efforts as well. So we'll start with Bill.
All right, welcome. Good to see you again.
Good to be back. It's a great project. I know time is short. We, Richard and I, Richard Bishop and I, have a number of images. And I think of this more of a, as a movie rather than a slideshow. I'm going to move very quickly through these. And if there are questions that you have about intent or content, please stop me. Otherwise, if you could hold your questions to the end, it would be great. First of all, we're going to very quickly summarize public engagement, go through the Grand Corridor Guidelines, and assessment. So much for going quickly here, sorry. Strategic Assessment Plan. And then importantly, we're going to talk about the opportunity sites. Because when the river is restored, there's going to be a great deal of opportunity for recreation that the city hasn't seen before. Before I do that, I'm going to turn it over to Richard here, who is going to talk about progress on the river itself.
Good morning.
Hello, good morning, welcome.
Thank you, Mayor, Commissioner, and City Manager for allowing us to be here this morning to give you an update on the river project. I think that I bring, I think, much better news today than you've heard from the reports in the past, and that's a good thing. What I want to do is update you on permitting, construction process, schedule, and funding. But before I get into those, I'd be remiss if I didn't tell you how much I appreciate what the city's doing for this project. It's a true public-private partnership. And not only from the funding perspective, but from the staff that you've put on it, from Jay to Kristen to Michael and Jim Smoligan. You know, that's what makes projects like this work so well. And again, thank you for putting that team in place. From a permitting perspective, you know, we, the times that I've been here in the past, we've talked about this Habitat Conservation Plan. We're not going down that pathway anymore, and I have to say, that's a good thing. We now are going down a Section 7 path. And the good, the great advantage of that Section 7 path, it identifies a schedule that the federal agencies have to go by. So it's important that we do our job to get them the information. But once they get that information, the clock starts ticking. And I'll go over with you later in the presentation that schedule. So we're going down the Section 7 path for that reach from basically 196 down to Fulton. That will be the first project that will come online. The second piece of it is from the adjustable hydraulic structure, which is between Ann and Leonard, all the way down to 196. That will be another Section 7 process that will be handled by the Corps of Engineers, who have been a great partner with Great Lakes Fisheries on this project. So they will, they will do the permit for that reach, and then they will construct, adjust the hydraulic structure. And then Grand Rapids Whitewater and the city will come back after that's done and demolish the Sixth Street down and put in the infrastructure from Sixth Street down to 196. I mentioned that lower reach is what we will start constructing first. And that will hopefully happen sometimes in late July of 19 or early 2020. And then, once all the permitting is done for Phase 2, which is that upper reach, construction will start on the adjustable hydraulic structure. But again, on that reach, the permitting process will be put in place by the Corps of Engineers. From a scheduling perspective, I mentioned how important the Section 7 process is. We, Grand Rapids Whitewater and the city are in the short throw of having what is called a biological assessment completed. That biological assessment actually identifies the effect that we will have on the endangered species, which is the snuffbox mussel. How we go mitigate that, minimize and avoid everything that we'd be doing in the river to help with that. And then certainly address the sea lamprey escapement piece. So all that is included in this biological assessment. We have a biologist that's working on that. We received the first draft about two weeks ago. Our staff internally with the city and Grand Rapids Whitewater, we've been reviewing that draft. The biologist now has our comments. She should deliver that draft to us in a final form somewhere around the end of September. And then a critical date is September 3rd, which is a holiday. So September the 4th, if everything goes to plan and we do what we need to do, we will deliver a formal BA to the federal agency. The federal agency, NRCS, will have about two weeks to review it. And then they will ship it to U.S. Fish and Wildlife. identify everything that we need to have in our permit application, so that that process runs as smoothly, as smoothly as it can. That being said, if everything tracks the way we anticipated it'd track, we should have a biological opinion in 19, have a permit from DEQ hopefully in late spring of 19, have a full permit. And worst case, a permit, best case, we're able to get in the river working in 19. Now, there's a lot of pieces of this puzzle that have to align to get there. I think, I think we will have a permit in 19. But depending on where we, at what time we get that permit, kind of drives how much work we can get done in the river towards cost-effective because of the seasons here. But that, as we track forward, we got the right people in place to make that decision. But again, the message I want to deliver is, I don't see any reason why we won't have a permit in 19 to do work. Whether or not we in the river working is still questionable. So that's where we're all permitting.
Richard, can you, can you just clarify though, when you say potentially next year? There's, there's different phases we have to go through and the very first one being the mussels and the hydraulic barrier. And so, you know, I think when people hear in the river, they may automatically assume that the construction will start on dam removal. That's not the case. There's a number of preliminary things that need to be done in the river before we even get to that phase.
The Sixth Street Dam?
Sixth Street Dam, yeah, yes.
So what, what will have to happen is, we can't take the Sixth Street Dam out until the adjustable hydraulic structure is put in place. The schedule for the adjustable hydraulic structure is not absolutely determined yet. But I can, if I had to anticipate the construction, that adjustable hydraulic structure wouldn't start any sooner than 2020.
Right.
Because it has to go through the permitting process also. And once it's built, then we can take out Sixth Street Dam, down to 196. But 196 to Fulton, again, if everything goes to plan, it should be completed by June of '22.
Great, thank you. I just want to be clear about expectations, that there's a lot of things in the river and that need to be done before there's any significant reconstruction.
And then, from a funding perspective, you know, I have to say, this is very encouraging on the funding side. If you, if you look at the chart, if you look at all of our goals and the different agencies that are partnering in this process, we've got, we've got commitments from everyone but Kent County. And give you the update on Kent County. We will be at the Finance Committee on September the 6th, I think. And we are very confident, and we've done, we've done the same presentation to the county. Very encouraged by what we hear, we're meeting with individual commissioners. And so we'll go to the Finance Committee early September, and then I think September the 26th, it's, it's at the Commission Table for a vote. So very encouraging. City of Grand Rapids is committed, DJR is committed. The state, we had 1.5 million we got in 18. They've already committed to the 1.5 in 19, so that 3 million is committed. And then the federal government, again, with the work that the city has done with the mayor's trips to Washington and the work that Steve Carey has done, that we're all partnering with now, and Bob Lamb with US, with Great Lakes Fisheries Commission, just a big success story there. And I think that that, those funds will continue to come in to get to that goal. So we'll, they will, and they've committed to building the adjustable hydraulic structure, which is a big deal. And then from the private side, I think we're a little over 45% now, and we really are just kicking off our capital campaign. We have another big meeting in September, so that's very encouraging. We're meeting with individual cabinet members and making sure that we're getting all the contacts in place so where we can finish our capital campaign draft somewhere probably middle or late '20. So it's a very encouraging process. And again, you know, these projects, these public-private partnerships are so good at leveraging public and private dollars to get community assets online. And it's good for everybody that's a part in that and continuing economic development, building tourism, and making the city a better place. So thank you for this opportunity this morning. And if you have any questions, I'll be hanging around after, after what Bill gets finished. Thank you.
We've, we've been working over the past year putting together design guidelines for the river edge. Not the river proper, but those areas along the river that are going to support in-river recreation. And really, our work's been an extension, an extension of GR Forward's public process. And it's been one of the primary goals of our project, is to implement the very broad vision of GR Forward. So to that end, we've, and I won't read through the list here on the screen in terms of our outreach efforts, but it's been a great deal of public outreach where we went out to the public, art prize, other events, things like that. We have an advisory committee, focus groups, and a website. So we've had a great deal of input. And this was the outcome. And without reading in detail here, people want to see more green on the river. They want to really restore the edges of the river. But interestingly, in contrast, they also want to use the river. Lots of use, that's all the purple. So they want to restore it, but they want to use it. And it's striking the right balance there, that is our goal, in doing guidelines for the river edge. And this is all online. And like I said, I'm going to go fairly quickly through these slides. Stop me if you'd like to dwell on them. So as an outcome of that public outreach, we've put together a series of guidelines that generally speaking, talk about corridor-wide guidelines that deal with circulation, how to treat the river edge itself, how to make the river edge more sustainable or resilient, how to gain more identity, a higher profile for the river itself through signage and wayfinding, public art. History and culture needs to be, the river has such a rich history and culture, how do we bring that to the fore? And then importantly, how do we implement? To do that, we identified a series of site types and character areas that really look at how the river is both one entity and how it's very different. So how do we give it a uniform identity and connect it? And how do we acknowledge and honor its differences? So looking at the corridor-wide guidelines, I think there are a couple of key things. First of all, circulation on the river edge is so important. And on the east bank, we're proposing a high trail and a low trail, as you can see in that center image there, so that there is really very broad access for in-river recreation from the shore and vice versa. It's, it's really important in terms of recreation activity and safety. The west bank is very different, as you know. It's institutions and it's a concrete wall. But that sort of connectivity is equally important. So how the river trail connects through the west edge is equally important and dealt within the guidelines. The red dots represent connections to the city and the plan. And that notion of connectivity, so that each area of the city can access the river easily and safely, is critical in our thinking. That came out in the public process. West side, other neighborhoods say, we can't get to the river. Make that an important part of the plan, and I'll get back to that in a minute. Then, we have a whole range of different edge types along the river to deal with. Greening the river in the upper-left image. How can we activate the river edge in, along the private areas? That red square, P1, and I'll come back to that. And then current trails quite often are underwater. How can we make those more usable more times of the year? Identity. We have a recommendation for different types of signage and wayfinding, so that you, you can find the river trail easily as a resident or a visitor. Also, how can intuitively, you just know you're at the river? So we talk about welcome mats, this sort of blue paving at major entry points, crosswalks, and then breadcrumbs, that notion of different things that just say, oh, yeah, yes, I'm at the river. If you've been to Indianapolis, there are historic trail there, easy to follow. That notion is what we're bringing forth here. So now, I want to just briefly touch on the different site types and character areas. Site types are those very broad categories that tend to differentiate between public and private ownership. And with each in, each of the site types, there are different character areas. For example, in parks, Riverside is very different than Butterfield. So we talk about those differences within those broad categories. Or also, in the private sector, the west side of the river, the old industrial areas that are tending to revitalize north of 194, very different than the Market Street site, just because of scale of site, if nothing else, and river edge conditions. So what I'm going to do now is walk you through some screenshots of different pages, dual pages within the guidelines. The document itself is at this point, I think, about 150 pages. I'm not going to bore you with a lot of detail here, but just give you a sense of what the different site types cover, so that you, here you can see Riverside and Butterfield and the different character areas, or the different concepts that drive the thinking there. Moving on, in the, in the private sector, the industrial redevelopment areas, these are really kind of the economic drivers. The, the, where activity along the river, I think, can really be a boon to the city from an economic standpoint, can incentivize developers to do the right thing on the river edge. You see some examples from Brooklyn and from Milwaukee here, that I think really get to the character that we're suggesting there, so that we encourage the developers to do things with the, with the cross-sections that you saw earlier. Public riverfront parks, these are really going to bear the, the brunt of the activity that will come to the river. Again, broad concepts for Canal Street and, and those sites to the north, great deal of river access, but it's very different than the number two sites that you see, which are the museums, museum sites. But they're both very public and they function in different ways that are covered in the character areas. The urban riverfront parks, again, it gets back to that notion of, how do we make the river, quote, "hard" so that you can accommodate very large events and activities that complement what might happen in Rosa Parks Park, but that are at the same time soft? So we, we talk about seating on the river edge of this, so that you can accommodate those major sporting events, kayaking festivals and things like that. But at the same time, they're very flexible open space that can accommodate the thousands of people that you see now on North Monroe with movies on Monroe already. It's not even a park yet, and that level of use is occurring. How do we accommodate both the softness of restoring the river, as well as, as that sort of level of activity that I think is, is out there already? Then, the guidelines cover those components, the site furniture that visually tie together the trail corridor along both edges of the river. Things like railings, for example, are key, so that we have that sort of uniformity. Paving and surfacing. We have a whole family of different types of paving that we're suggesting for private development and for public as well, public parks. We also have one of our consultants doing a strategic asset management plan. Because as you know, if you can't maintain it, and if you can't manage these parks, and this is a big undertaking for the city, but it's also a tremendous opportunity as a regional and citywide resource. If you can't do that, they're, they're going to have problems, they're going to fail in certain ways. So we're looking long-term at levels of service for the different character areas that I've already described. A maintenance forecast in terms of cost and management strategies. So that's currently in process. And in each of those different character areas, we're talking about levels of service. And I won't go through these in any detail, but obviously, the red ones, which are the downtown parks, the Fish Ladder in North Monroe, for example, the existing promenade, the, the parks, Canal Street and the new parks to the north, those are going to be very high maintenance, because they're going to have high levels of use. So they're going to cost more. The costs of maintaining and managing an urban park are, you know, multiple times more than a typical city park, for example. Whereas Butterfield and Riverside, you know, especially Butterfield, those natural areas, those aren't going to cost as much. So we're really looking at those different levels as part of the management plan. And then it goes into a great amount of detail. I won't try to get into detail in terms of these charts. I'm not good at charts to begin with, like this. But for example, the, the blue line, which is paving and furnishings, costs very little once they're installed. But as they age, they, the costs increase, to the point you replace them. And that's that sort of, kind of peak to valley, the high peak to valley. Whereas plantings, and this plan will differentiate between trees, for example, lower maintenance, and kind of turf and flowers and things like that tend to be higher maintenance and more cyclically. So it gets into a fair amount of detail. So there'll be costs for, in very specific ways, different levels of service and for different types of improvements along the corridor. The maintenance and management will include looking at what might be maintained in-house by parks, that might be maintained and managed by DJRI, and what might be, might require a new type of management structure, because it's just not, the challenges just aren't met by what we, what the city currently has. But the key here is to anticipate that, rather than wait until there are problems and then you have to fix it. So I'll keep going. I'm going to switch now to going through the opportunity sites, or five sites along the river that we're looking at, that will be developed as parks or improved as part of work that Richard's group is going to, that Whitewater will do. These sites are all used as river access during the construction. So they're going to be torn up to different levels. Some of these aren't touched very much, but for example, North Monroe becomes a major access point for, for river improvements. And you can see the different sites that we're looking at here. First of all, the public museum, our focus has been to really look at that edge between the building itself and the river, as to how we can make that much more useful. We see interpreting the history of the site and the canals that drove the mills along the river as being a major interpretive opportunity in terms of water feature. So that notion of environmental education and education about the city's history, formalizing a small amphitheater that now occurs on the site, a place for kids to hang out before the school groups go into the museum. And importantly, I think, gathering areas along the river edge, a, and I'll flip forward here, the triangular, brown triangular thing, an outdoor dining area off the cafe that will be developed as part of the river, the museum expansion. And then to the right of the, of the carousel, more along Pearl there, a terrace that would be used, an outdoor terrace, for receptions and things like that. So gaining a lot more use that really support the, the mission and the activities of the museum itself. Cold Brook Site and Canal Street Boat Launch Area. This, according to GR Whitewater, becomes a really important point, potentially, for launching in-water kayaking and rafting groups. And Richard can attest to the popularity of these facilities, of in-river facilities of rapids and rafting and kayaking, once they're built. So knowing that redevelopment is part of the city's desire for Cold Brook, we're suggesting that, that middle site, the park site, between the existing building, the water treatment plant building, which would be redeveloped, be maintained and preserved, so that you can have large volumes of concessionaires that bring boaters in here. There can be literally hundreds of people and lines of buses that are dropping off in-river boaters, waiting to get into boats, learning on how to not drown in the river if they fall out, and things like that. So I could talk about an experience I had in Colorado recently. I won't do that in the interest of time. And then it still leaves a site for redevelopment as well. Also- Also, that notion of environmental education is really important on this site. We're proposing that the outfall to Coldbrook Creek actually be daylighted as an opportunity for environmental education, for programs that would be housed in the, in the building. The repurposed water building has some great potential for possibly not only interpretation, but Parks Department uses, maybe crafts related to the river, canoe building and things like that. So it's a big building. This is not the entire building shown here, but I think there's some really exciting possibilities that connect the indoors and outdoors to the river. Equally interesting is the water storage site. We've been intrigued with how we might repurpose the water tanks as a unique destination unlike anything else, the, the woods along the river, the kind of low area that floods, you've seen this before, I think elevated trails through the treetops, but the key here is this, this is probably one of the more important points for river access. It's where the, the adjustable dam is located and it really becomes a community or a regional facility. This is where a lot of people will enter the river. So here's a better image to explain the circular thing it looks like.
Bill, Commissioner Moody has a question for you.
I'm sorry.
I have a question after I'm spilling my coffee up here. Everything is fantastic. I just want to ask the question, is there any place in your plans for fishermen?
Yes.
People who enjoy fishing?
He's getting to that. I've already seen this presentation, so.
Oh, great, 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 great.
Yes, and I will, I will assure you that individuals from the, the fishing community have been actively engaged in this conversation, and, and even in regards to, to this site, Bill, you may speak to the, to the engagement with folks from the Native American community.
That's right. This is probably one of the more important points for anglers, we think, and they'll work their way downstream, especially in low water. But that's a whole notion of the low trail on the east side of the river, that you could literally get into the river almost at any point on the east side of the river, Canal Street, Coldbrook.
You said off of Canal?
I'm sorry.
You said off of Canal Street?
Canal Street Park, yes. So that whole edge becomes much more accessible to the degree that we can put a low, take the existing wall out and put in a terrace sort of series of trails.
Yeah, I asked that question because I have a lot of friends who go down to the river to fish, especially on Sunday mornings, so I wanted to make sure they had a spot down there somewhere they can find a place to be comfortable at.
Yeah. Are you going to go down there with them?
Not on Sunday.
Not on Sunday. Another day, another day.
Okay. No, you can see that the big lawn there, the kind of gradual slope down, the, the area at the, at the river. I want to point out the collapsible dam on the lower left corner. So upstream you have flat water, the, the, the portage is, is that area along the edge on the, on the right edge of the river, a very large playground, amenities for, for kids, hopefully winter use would occur here, cross-country skiing through the woodlot and the natural area to the north. So we really think it can function year-round. Areas for ceremonial use for the, the First Americans, we had that discussion with them, this is an important site to them. So I think a lot can happen here that means a lot to different communities within the larger communities of the city.
And Commissioner Kelly may be interested in the water tower and the conversation about potentially using that as an event space for weddings and events.
(inaudible)
Yeah, no, but thank you. We have a wedding advocate and parks on the board here.
We have serious questions about the structural, the structural issues related to taking the top off of the tank, but let's, let's dream a little bit, and if it doesn't work well, we tried.
Yeah.
It could be one of the most interesting spaces in southern Michigan, I think. North Monroe, we see as being a major sort of venue for large events, for in-river events. It's, it's at the rapids where all the in-river boating competitions will occur, probably somewhat secondary to Fish Ladder, but just large open spaces that can accommodate, the edge is designed to act as really an amphitheater edge, and different terraces going down to the river to accommodate very large groups, the kind of the music festivals that have been occurring there with the tent fits on the upper lawn. Also, the notion of activation daily is important. There's been desire for a skate park in the downtown area for a long time, that could occur under the viaduct. The, the lower portion right along 196 there is an important takeout point for tubers and kayakers, so we're accommodating in-river activities. Let's see, what have I left out? So I think simplicity and flexibility really is the byword for development of North Monroe to complement other spaces that you have in the downtown. And here's an aerial image of it. And wrapping up, Fish Ladder, it's probably the most important spectator site for in-river competitions, so we really focused on preserving the existing Fish Ladder structure, which is a great sort of icon for the city, and expanding the river edge viewing opportunities and river access there. And you can see in the image on the right how there are a number of points where you can get into the water there, including the existing boat launch area. Unfortunately, we, we just started this recently, we don't have a sketch like the other one, that's coming, but that's the end of my presentation. Love your questions, comments.
Thank you. Maybe, Bill, to, to add, Tim, I don't know if you were planning to speak or not, thank you for being here, but I think, I think maybe a, a good addition would be, be an update on the conversations happening at DGRI, DGRI and the commitment of that board to look at models for long-term sustainability, and that DGRI is taking the lead on starting to have some of those community conversations now that we have some of these planning processes and some of this visioning done. Can you just speak to that a little bit? I, I know it's a priority to a lot of people, especially as we look at increasing community engagement and people around the table as we look to long-term oversight and, and maintenance of the entire river corridor.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Good morning, Commissioners. Yeah, so we received the same presentation at the DDA Board last week, obviously very supportive and encouraged by all the work and thought that's gone into this. The main questions that continue to come up from DGRI and DDA kind of surround this maintenance question, and I think we're really encouraged to see the, the strategic asset management plan that's come out of this and the thinking behind that. I think we all get the vision or are supportive of it, but we know that with new improvements, with implementation come additional maintenance costs and responsibility, and so we're very interested in understanding, you know, how that's going to impact the overall operations of the corridor and thinking, you know, Bill mentioned at the outset, but thinking about how this is going to get managed long-term, and really just going through a process to determine what's going to be best for all of us, both from the city, DGRI, Whitewater, and, and thinking, you know, looking at models from across the country, but just thinking about how we can make sure that once this great amenity and asset becomes what we all think it will, that we're utilizing it to its full potential and that's, that it's here for the long-term. So I think that's kind of the, the high level of what we're hearing, and we're encouraged and looking forward to going through a process to identify what's going to be best for, for the river corridor.
Thank you.
Yeah.
And I, I just want to highlight that that process will, as Tim said, include looking at best practices and other models, and then we as a community can decide what we think is best moving forward. Again, there's a lot of work still to be done, as, as Richard said before, we're in the water, but we want to start that conversation now, especially after the great work that's been done by the River for All team, which there's a number of the team members there in the back. I want to thank you for your incredible work on, on this planning process and visioning, really. So thank you. All right, Commissioners, any questions for Bill, Richard, David, or Tim? Commissioner?
I do have a funding question. If we can go back to that slide, I don't remember the exact dollar amount, but I'm curious to know where the federal funds are coming from, which department are they grants, and a little bit more details about those dollars.
One of this from Foreign Ops, and the other one is from the Great Lakes Fisheries Commission's partnership with Corps of Engineers through EPA. Those are the two areas that the money's coming from.
So are those dollars sustainable, or are those one-time dollars?
No, well, actually, the funding for the adjustable hydraulic structure is coming in, it's sustainable in the sense that it's been set aside, but it's coming in upcoming years. The Great Lakes Fisheries is already holding about 4 million of it, and 4.5 of it will come next year, and so over, and that's why when I mentioned it would be about 2020, but it's in the budget and all that's moving very well. And then I also mentioned that this, again, with the city's partnership, working with a delegation from, from Great Lakes Fisheries Commission, helped get $8 million into their budget to deal with sea lamprey across the, across the Great Lakes. But a part of that 1.8 million goes to this project, and so as long as that money is in the budget, that 1.8 million will continue to come in too. So it's not grants, it's, it's sustainable funds. Now, as you know, things happen in Washington, but everything is looking really good to this point, yeah.
And then, City Manager, this is a question for you. So the 2 million for the city, the city's contribution, is that 2 million over, what's the length of time for that amount?
Over five years.
Five. Okay. Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And I'll, I'll just add that the, a significant amount of the federal funding will go for the capital and the building of the hydraulic barrier.
Okay.
Yeah. All right, Commissioner Park?
Yeah, I just want to say thanks for reaching out to the Nishinabe community and getting their input, and I was pleased to see some of their ideas incorporated here. I've reviewed their full list, and they've got some really important information for us to consider as we roll this out, so I just wanted to affirm that and thank, thank you for that, and I'll be watching for how that gets incorporated into the plan.
Commissioner Kelly, did you have a question?
Well, just again, I want to thank you all as well, the whole committee that's been working on this for such a long time, and remember how this all got started with residents who came up with this, Chad and Chris, and really appreciate their, their input. Very thankful for the comments on the asset management plan, because, you know, we've certainly been down that road with our own infrastructure here, and I know you've talked about different ways that we can put together a conservancy or some form to oversee this whole project, so appreciate that. And then, of course, I think you are well aware that we're, this body is hoping to see as much opportunity as possible in the building of this from our local contractors and minority contractors and women contractors, so just a huge thanks for how far we've come along, and it'll be very enjoyable to watch this as it moves forward. Thank you all.
Commissioner, I'm glad you brought that up, because we've had a lot of conversations about that, and I think that's why it's so important for us to look at our own internal procurement process and bid discount, and for us to have that conversation, because the, the contracts for this project will come through the city, and so it's a huge opportunity, and we're, we're already in the midst of, of having those conversations, but as we've sat around this table and fiscal committee has really taken this on, we need to, to take a, a much deeper dive into our current policies and, and really strengthen them as we think about this project especially. Yeah. Any other, any other questions or comments? All right. Thank you, everyone. Thank you all. Appreciate your work. Great update. All right, Commissioners, next that will take us to, I see a topic that is also aligned with, with that conversation around procurement, and that is the work that the Economic Development Department is doing around an equitable economic development strategic plan. So as you all know, we talked about this during the budget, it was, there was funding allocated for this project, knowing that it's a, a really important thing that we take on as a city, and also that it was one of the recommendations that came out of Kara's work with the Rose Center Fellowship, and it was one of their, I think, 12 recommendations that we had from them. So I'm going to turn it over to Kara, just to let you know, some of us have been privy to this presentation, because Kara presented it at our recent Economic Development Project Team meeting, so Commissioner Jones and Commissioner Repart were in that meeting with me. So Kara, thank you, and I'll turn it over to you for the presentation.
Thank you. So again, to reiterate what the mayor said, this comes as a result of your strategic planning session in December, and the work called for a comprehensive economic development vision and plan. In addition, Transformation Plan Phase Four calls for departments to complete a strategic plan that incorporates the following five elements: the racial equity lens, measurable key performance indicators, outcomes and metrics, lean processes, and alignment with the sustainability transformation of fiscal plans. In addition, I want to highlight the, the fact that the work done around the neighborhoods in Focus has been impactful, and most of you know what those consist of, but the Kellogg Foundation did some work to identify that 32% of the city's population resides in these 14 census tracts known as the neighborhoods in Focus, and this is also 50% of the city's poverty. That area has lost population, they have the largest concentration of persons of color, they have the highest unemployment rates and the lowest educational attainment rates, among other things. And we know our future is going to look different, our changing demographics are also a component to consider as part of this. In addition, there has been some work done around the city contracting of public services as it relates to park streets and sidewalks, and we believe that the applicability is transferable to the public investment being made through the economic development incentive programs that result in construction activity and new employment or housing opportunities. In addition, the economic case for equity is such that our MSA, our GR Grand Rapids, Wyoming MSA, would add nearly $4 billion of GDP growth if persons of color participated in the employment sector and were equally compensated with whites. So this is a remarkable opportunity for growth, and how do we pursue that? So while we think that the programs alone can't eliminate disparities in our community, the opportunities certainly exist to advance racial equity through our strategic planning and policymaking, so that's what we're pursuing. A five-year comprehensive strategic plan to advance equity would be our goal. We would RFP for a consultant team to assist us with this. The focus would be in five pillars specifically: the business development, climate, the real estate development area, neighborhood business districts, or quarter improvement district authorities and bid, innovation, entrepreneurship, and mobility, noting that equity spans throughout all of those. Equity isn't a separate pillar, it has to be embedded in each of these pillars. The strategic plan would be built upon existing plans, some of which are adopted and others that are relevant or pending. Engagement, so as part of the process, we've outlined some of the components: convening a steering committee to facilitate a mission, vision, and value session, having a current state analysis done to identify our current state of economics here in the city, so that we build a plan based on what's realistic, seeking input from residents, elected officials, the public and private partner stakeholders, uniquely done through an equity-centered design process on each of the five pillars. In addition, we'd want to align regionally with stakeholders such as The Right Place, Kent County, Michigan Works, the Michigan Economic Development Corporation, and the Michigan State Housing Development Authority on topics of housing, workforce development, talent, mobility, and business development, because those are matters that are much more impactful at the regional level as opposed to something that could be solved here locally. Components of the process would include an analysis of the baseline economic conditions, a SOAR analysis, strengths, opportunities, aspirations, and results, identifying and removing barriers, identifying the short, medium, and long-term goals and strategies to achieve them, KPIs or key performance indicators with appropriate benchmarks that are realistic for our economic conditions, and recommendations to deploy and develop resources to achieve those goals. And this would be a five-year plan with SMART goals and tracking mechanisms so that we could report back. The objective would be to benchmark our performance against aspirational cities or competitor cities. This is our opportunity to be bold as a city and set our sights on being the best mid-sized city in the U.S. with a vibrant economy that is inclusive in its growth. Identifying an implementation plan with measurable tactics, defined targets, and a reporting structure with a focus on data-driven decision-making and continuous improvement is key. So the deliverables would be a plan, we also would, would seek a program or project evaluation process map that's transparent and predictable for investors. We also would, would seek a program or project evaluation process map that's transparent and predictable for investors. Infographics and a dashboard template to communicate electronically on the website and the key performance indicator reporting mechanism as well. So here's an opportunity for you to share with, with us the goals that you have, the expectations, any questions that you might have about the process. We would like to know what you believe would define success in this process.
All right, I'll turn to my Kelly, Commissioner Lanier.
Yes, so Kara, thank you so much for the presentation. I'm really happy to hear that you all are doing this work. And I know you've shared some of this at our South Town CID meeting. I'm curious to know and, and how opportunity zones will tie into this. And is it possible, City Manager and Mayor, for us to get some type of a presentation on the opportunity zones? We keep having questions and even members of our staff aren't necessarily equipped with responding to them. I personally don't feel like I'm equipped to respond to them. I know it's new, I know there are a lot of unknowns about it. But if we can do some form of a presentation, even through this process as you're engaging the community, because I think they are tied together at some point. But even if we could have some presentation at this table, just so that the community can be aware of what that is and what it means for our city.
Commissioner, that's a, that's a great recommendation. In fact, last week I saw a couple folks from Mishda and asked them if there was any update on opportunity zones because a lot of cities have questions. And the federal government hasn't been really helpful in understanding the potential impact, but also the role of local units of government. I think that's a big question mark. So Kara, would you follow up on that?
Sure. And I can tell you that a lot of the guidance from the federal program has not been issued yet. It is expected this fall, though I did hear that recently. But know that it'll be another tool in the toolbox, like the low-income housing tax credit that's, you know, administered federally and statewide. So I think it'll, again, be a tool in the toolbox that we'll consider.
So I wonder if there is a way to do some one-page of what we already know? And then, and then share with people that in the fall will have more details as they become available. That'll, that'll at least help us to communicate something between now and, and fall. The other thing, back to your goals, I think, we've talked about this a couple times and especially a couple years ago during the budgeting process where, when there was a new position created, and I'm forgetting the title, I think it's an analyst position, but when it was created in, in the department, we talked about the roles and responsibility of that position. And, and talked about this body having a, an understanding of what our expectations would be for that position so that then it can inform. It was a newly created position and it was, like many positions when we're adding them, was a point of robust discussion. And, and I just, one of the components to the position was tied to being available to existing and starting businesses as a one-stop shop. So that if I'm looking to launch a business, I can go to this person or in this department to be able to get all of my needs met, even if that's helping me to know how to navigate government, local or, you know, county or state, just having the tools available to any business owner. And so I want to revisit that conversation. I know our immediate focus was to make sure that the Cids and Bids had the support that they needed. And now I think kind of expanding that to make sure that we're including that component where engagement is happening in, in, on a level where newer business owners and existing businesses will know where to go. And so a part of that will probably be some campaign of informing them that it's available and then talking through what supports are necessary. So I don't know, you know, at what point, but I think that would be something that if, as we're talking in the community about this or the department, I think that would be a really good thing to try and garner some feedback on. I know that in our CID, and Chama has done a really good job at helping the business owners in our CID to kind of know and navigate. And I think it would be a really good thing to have it formalized so that everyone then can be aware.
Yeah, that's a good point. And it, it should probably be in partnership with what Lou is doing in the Development Center with the business.
Yep, and what AJ is doing. Yeah, so just all of that, just trying to figure the whole thing out so that businesses will know.
That's an excellent point. Maybe that's right for an assessment and to see if that's most efficient or if maybe it needs to look different. We'll add that to the list of the new City Manager. Commissioner?
Yep. Thank you, Kara, for your, for your presentation. I'd like to make mention the fact that the, there was a presentation that took place last Tuesday by Alyssa Davis, the Bloomberg Fellow. And I think it very much underscores what we're talking about on this morning. It was, it's, it's one thing to hear the data. It's a whole nother thing to actually see the data. And when you see the disparity, it is both heartbreaking. And it's also, it speaks to the, the level of, of urgency that we need to engage in to really address this. Because I think in order for us to keep down the path of wanting to be a world-class, medium-sized city, we've got to, you know, find a way to be intentional about trying to get at that and drill down at that issue. And Alyssa did a great job with the, you know, with the very sobering data. But I also, but again, it just speaks volumes about it. And it just makes it, I think, clear that we have obviously a lot of work to do, but this is the way in which we need to engage. We need to be very intentional, unapologetic, and really drill down in trying to get to a place where we can see some, you know, some moving of the needle around equitable economic development, so.
Yeah, thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Kelly?
Yeah, I just wanted to comment on Commissioner Lanier's comments about the opportunity zones and our need for a better understanding. And then the opportunity to, to, through the Legislative Committee, to be proactive. I mean, we found that with a state, if, if we come up with suggestions ahead of time, we may well be able to have some influence there. So if we better understand it, then we can better respond and, and be proactive. And then I just thinking that, you know, we just had this huge conversation around marijuana. We are going to see some income coming into the city. Again, these are opportunities for us to figure out how, how does that play into this in a way where we might have more control than otherwise. So I don't know how we will decide, but I think that's got to be part of the conversation too on how to use that, that those income tax earnings.
Commissioner?
Great work, Kara. I just want to say that I appreciate equity being at the front and center of the plan. To me, that's the goal, that's my expectation, as well as how I think we're going to define success. So if we've got a five-year plan, we can measure how we've done on that. And that's super important. I also just want to affirm this, this idea of regionally looking at things like housing and mobility because our, our surrounding jurisdictions need to join us in that equitable work as well as that work around affordable housing, workforce development, and wages. So, thank you.
Thank you. All right, any final comments, Commissioner?
Yeah, I just, I appreciate the work. I, you know, I sound like a broken record sometimes when I talk about incentives, but it's, it's, you know, we have, we have to be mindful when we do this work that we use the right incentives to try to incentivize the right things. And so some of the, some of the incentives are competitive and limited in scope. And some of the, and so we don't have a lot of control over them. Sometimes I think there's incentives that are essentially unlimited in scope. And so trying not to reduce those when there is no cap on them. And, and then ultimately ensuring that, you know, we don't have incentives for some of the things that we wish we did. And so I think that's probably the most important thing is we live in a very boom or bust way in which the incentives work for affordable housing. You know, we get, a Lytec project is really the only way you get a affordable housing development. And we get one or two cycles, so three or four a year, and that's great. But we've lost the ability to do the things in the neighborhood. The things like small market tax credits, things like historic tax credits. There are the things that really move the needle in, in incremental scale that actually probably have a longer-term impact on revitalizing our neighborhoods and neighborhood business districts. So it's, we think we need to be more intentional about, you know, advocating for access to things like that in Lansing. And then, you know, ultimately how we do prioritize some of our, the tax credit we're allowed to, to access from the state and how we prioritize them, that, you know, we appreciate the large-scale projects. We also need to have some understanding that we need to be more intentional about targeting them to smaller projects as well to give more opportunity in, in other places in our community.
Yeah, excellent point, thank you. Any final comments? All right?
Yes, I do.
Commissioner?
I had the opportunity to meet Mrs. Davis and I had a nice conversation with her. So Mrs. Wood, thank you for the, the report. I wanted to get to the luncheon, but I couldn't because I had previous engagement. But I had a nice talk with her and then she was able to give me the opportunity to read her report before you guys got it. And, and like Commissioner Jones, my heart was a little bit deterred. Especially when you're looking at economic development in a particular area where the areas are not growing. But I think at this point in time, there is, there is light at the end of the tunnel. And from reading the report, the community engagement is going to be a very important piece. And we have to find individuals in the community who want to develop economically. And there are individuals out there that just need some guidance. So I think it's important that we take the report and we make the report become actionable. We already got the data, we already know what's going on, now it's time to do something about it.
Yeah, thank you. So before us on the screen, our next steps. So Kara will take the lead on this. And Kara, remind us timeline, when do we hope to issue an RFP?
So we hope to, our, our issue an RFP within the next couple of months. We're working with our partners to review this information, the other boards and authorities that will be part of this process. In addition, we will be presenting Alyssa's report at Economic Development Project Team. That data will serve as a foundation for this plan going forward. And we'll continue to provide updates at Economic Development Project Team.
And is it reasonable to think that we'll be able to move forward on the actual planning early next year?
I would hope so, hopefully even later this year.
Okay, great. All right, thank you for your work on this. All right, Commissioners, it's 10:42 and we are getting to our action items. So we, I know we had a, a number of presentations, that's why the briefing afterwards was canceled. One of the reasons, I should say. So we'll get moving on this because, reminder, we also have Economic Development Project Team at 12:30. We have a work session on street infrastructure at 1:30. And we have a performance review with our city attorney at 3:00. Do you want us to reschedule? We'll talk about that in a minute. So let's get to our action item, which is item number four. This is a resolution scheduling a special meeting of the City Commission to be held on August 28th at 6:30 PM for the recent Third Ward Commissioner Nathaniel Moody to affirm the oath of office.
Support.
All right, so hopefully everyone will be there and we'll have a little party before our 7:00 PM meeting. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, it carries. All right, next that will take us to a resolution approving a request for Commissioner Moody to join all of us in attending the MML Conference, which is taking place here in Grand Rapids in late September.
Support.
All right, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, it carries. Commissioners, by now you should have received an agenda, there's a lot of great workshops. And then also information on the opening reception, I hope all of you can attend that. And if you have any questions, you can reach out to Laura, she's been coordinating this out of my office. So Laura, thank you. All right, next that will take us to a resolution approving artists and venue agreements for Art Prize 2018.
To move.
Support. All right, Asanti, you want to tell us about this?
Hello, thank you. So every year, in partnership with Art Prize, we do these hosting agreements. This facilitates the event and makes it a possible, so the city and the artists that are on public property or in the public right-of-way know their responsibilities. So I'll leave it at that and turn it over to TJ and Jolie, who will give a brief presentation about some of the art that's going to be a part of Art Prize this year.
All right, wonderful. Welcome.
Hello.
Hi.
So I won't take up too much of your time today, thanks, thanks for having us. We're really excited about the projects that are coming to the city this year. My name's TJ Matthew, I'm the Public Projects Manager for the 2018 season for Art Prize.
And my name is Jolie Krikakis and I am the Exhibitions Assistant for Art Prize.
So really I just want to go through some of these projects. So featured, quickly, Featured Public Projects is a granting program that was started in 2016 to help facilitate bringing large-scale public works to the city, temporary large-scale public works to the city. And we have a few, a few projects going in this year that we're really excited about. And then I'll also briefly touch on our mural program, which is temporary murals that go in at different locations on shipping containers. So here we go, briefly. So this, this project, The World Beneath the City, is going in, excuse me, at a Navan Park. It's going to be six giant red crocodiles. They're going to be kind of moving across, moving across the park in, in this, in this formation. And it'll be really nice for families and kids to come visit. They'll be able to kind of climb on them and interact with them in that way, which is pretty exciting. Moving on, this is going to be on Gillette Bridge, it is oscillation. It's an interactive installation with light and sound. Four and five crystals in different sizes, they're made from essentially plastic, U ultra-high molecular weight plastic, so a durable, durable plastic. And those go on Gillette Bridge, they are, are, have the theremin devices on the inside that when people go up to them and interact with them, they make different sounds based on how close you are in proximity to the sculpture. So those will be pretty, pretty exciting. This is our site plan for that. A few of them will kind of just go along the entire span of the bridge. In the past, we've had projects that are in the, are centralized and, or in the center of the bridge. And we're excited that this one is kind of spanning the width. So there will be something to see as you move across from the, from east side to west side and into a Navan Park where the, where the crocodiles will be as well. Just another image of that for you all. You can see these are, are quite, are quite big, they'll be a nice presence there. This piece will be in Calder Plaza, it's by Gustavo Prado, titled "Stream." Pretty, it's always really exciting to me to see projects that are simple with their materials but have a really, a really nice presence. So they're, they're easy to set up, they're easy to maintain, and they're, you know, relatively easy to take away. And this is a good example of that, Gustavo's piece really does that very well. And this is kind of our layout for Calder Plaza. So the footprint is, is quite big, not, not too big, I think. But it'll be really exciting to see people move through this piece. It's just cinder blocks and convex mirrors, so you'll get a lot of nice reflections in the mirrors of what's, of what's surrounding the area. And this piece has been used, has been set up, not this same formation, but in different formations multiple times. And it's really great to see people interact with them. Lots of selfies happening, which is, which is pretty exciting. And it gets, yeah, it gets people really excited about being, being in the area. So this is Gustavo's piece. This project by Slow Architecture that is going into the river, Harvest Dome 3.0, another iteration of this one in, in New York City. And this is going right off of a Navan Park. It's made from recycled, recycled seatbelts, river mirrors, and floats on two-liter soda bottles. So we'll be putting this in on August 28th. We're working with MDEQ to get permissions for the, for the river. And we've been working with J and Asanti and the AAC have all been really, really fantastic getting, getting these projects approved and helping them, and helping them move forward. We really couldn't do it without them, so always appreciate all the help. And this is John Suave, Man in the City, this will be on the Blue Bridge. It's a seven-foot die-cut steel, die-cut steel man. This is our installation area right there on the left-hand side. Yeah, and there will, there will also be other, John is working with different businesses in the city to have smaller die-cut steel men placed either in proximity to their, to the businesses or potentially on the top of buildings. This is, if you have been to Detroit recently, there are some of these on top of buildings there. And they're really, it's really awesome to go around and see them as you're driving around, kind of a nice spectacle around the city. Moving on to murals, for Gillette Bridge, this is Shayna Cosalon's mural. This is not the one that will be installed in the city on the shipping container, but just kind of a finished product to show you a difference from her proposal, which is the next slide. So this is her proposal that was, that was approved by Art Prize and AAC. This will be, so each, each shipping container gets a mural on, on each side. So this is one side, and then the other side is, is here. And Brian Lacy is at Calder Plaza. These are the designs that were approved for Brian. They will be a similar, similar colors to the, the first slide, one side and the other side. And then Patrick Hershberger. Patrick was a, Art Prize artist in the past. This is one of his pieces that was outside of Van Andel. And this year he is doing Club Indigo. He has done work on historical moments and things in Grand Rapids. So he's focusing on, yeah, this Club Indigo that was demolished in 1991, but had been a popular establishment since the, since the 30s. since the, since the 30s. And he does some fun stuff with characters, so this will be one side, the interior of Club Indigo, and then an exterior shot. That's it, thanks for, thanks for having us, yeah.
Great, thank you. Commissioners, any questions? Commissioner Kelly?
Is this available on your website, the slideshow?
The slideshow is not available on the website. I can, I can make it available to you if you'd like to review it and see it.
Love to.
All of the, all of the artists are on, are on the Art Prize website, but not in this, not in this format. So you'd be able to look them up and see their pieces, but it's not going to be like, like this, like you see here.
I mean, and if it's okay, we share it because people will want to come, this is some pretty incredible art. And I also wanted to say, it would be awesome, I know we want to get ourselves on the map and keep ourselves on the map, others, cities are copying this, if we could have some information about the science behind some of these things, like the, on the bridge, why, why the sound works the way it does, and the music, and so on. There are a number in here that I was thinking, looking at through the lens of teaching science. If we could have some information, that would be another real bonus for families to come down and have their kids understand how this all works.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely. I can talk with some of the artists and see if we can get some of that information, for sure, yeah, I know they're, it's like, how do, how do these things happen?
Yes.
It's very logical and, yeah, absolutely.
Great, thank you, thank you.
Thank you, appreciate it, what a fun year.
Yeah, thank you so much, looking forward to it.
All right, so Commissioners, I'll call the question, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, it carries. All right, next that will take us to a resolution authorizing the Breakaway Music Festival to be held August 24th and 25th at Bellknap Park.
So moved.
Support.
All right, Yvette, you want to tell us about this? This would be the second year of the Breakaway Music Festival.
Yes, absolutely. So this year, a lot of planning has gone into this event, just like last year. Last year, the economic impact was $1.3 million for this first-time event, so we were very excited to have them back again, a second year. This year, we've increased some street closure signage in the Bellknap neighborhood area. Google Maps has changed the Bellknap Park address so that cars, Uber, and Lyft will deliver people to the base of the hill, and not at the top of the neighborhood. We're continuing to advocate for walkability and different mobility options throughout the event weekend. The event organizer, Chris Meyer, has worked with Noble, he met with them back in March. They're notifying their members, they're doing posters, flyers, neighborhood notices, yard signs. And they're also going to do a pizza party the day before the event kicks off with the neighborhood. And they're going to get free tickets, tours, and just really make sure that the neighborhood is aware of what's going on and what to expect.
Great, that's wonderful. Commissioners, questions?
Just a huge thank you, Yvette, because last year, I think maybe got one call about it, and that was it. So I mean, the work that's gone into this between you, the staff, Bellknap, it's incredible to have so many people coming into that neighborhood and not get any complaints. And then it would be great if we could find a way to get some of those proceeds to pay for those stairs, because they're in such bad shape up the hill. Thanks.
Wonderful, any other questions or comments? All right, well, thank you so much, we're glad to have them back. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, it carries. All right, next will be a resolution establishing an industrial development district for Grand River Aseptic Manufacturing for a project proposed at 524 and 528 Butterworth Street Southwest. Can I get a motion?
So moved.
Support.
All right, so Commissioners, we heard about Graham at our public hearing and this request, it's a great company over on the west side. Kara, anything you want to add to this?
Just that it's a very significant investment by a locally grown company, and a lot of great paying jobs and the type of work we want to see here in this, this area.
All right, questions or comments? All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, it carries. The next one is a companion item, and this is a resolution approving an industrial facilities exemption certificate for the same company, Grand River Aseptic Manufacturing, for their project at 524 and 528 Butterworth Street.
Support.
All right, anything to add?
No additional comments.
All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, it carries. All right, next that will take us to a resolution approving a contract with West Michigan Environmental Action Council for the 15th Annual Mayor's Grand River Cleanup and Rain Barrel Program.
So moved. Support.
All right, and Mike Lund is here to talk to us about this.
Good morning Commissioners, I got delegated up to Kerry, who was sitting here waiting to cover it, but she had to go to another meeting.
All right.
And that meeting's about some of the work we're doing along the Grand River, so she had to go. So this again is the annual mayor's cleanup, it's September 8th, and continued participation in creating rain barrels, rain barrel workshops to give knowledge about rain and storage.
Thanks, thanks Mike. So hopefully all of you will come join me for a morning cleaning up the river. It's lots of fun, wear heavy boots or rain boots, because it's also kind of muddy and messy.
And it's grown over the years, more and more communities participate and do things along with it, so it keeps getting bigger and better.
It is, and just so you know, our neighbors, so the Mayor Moss from Granville, Mayor Pol from Wyoming, and Mayor Heisinga from Walker joined me, and so we kick off the event, and then we all join a group of volunteers at a different segment of the river, and then we come back together at the end, and typically there's music and lunch and a beer tent, so you can have a nice refreshing drink after typically a warm, sometimes wet, sweaty morning. Doesn't that sound fun, Commissioner? Well, last year I was in the Third Ward cleaning up gutters, and that was, and alleys, that was a lot of fun. So anyway, all right, any other questions about this? You can sign up on the WMEC webpage or get more information from my office. All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, it carries. Thanks, Mike. Tell Kerry thank you. Oh, you're up next, too. So next item, Mike Lund can stay right up there, it's a resolution to amend ordinance chapter 33 called Pole Line and Duck System of Title II of the Code of the City of Grand Rapids.
So moved.
Support.
All right, Mike?
So Commissioners, we've been working with the City Attorney's Office, Town Foresee, to develop this ordinance to clarify some of the rules and things that go on within the duck bank system that we manage. We have customers within the duck banks that if our rodent chews through a piece of wire or fiber, they expect us to fix it for them. Or there's misdig accidents that go on and their fiber gets cut or something, again, they come back to us even after they file a misdig ticket saying that they don't have anything in the area. So this is just a clarification to current practices that we've worked with the City Attorney's Office on. And this just sets it up for a public hearing in two weeks or three weeks.
Great. Commissioners, any questions? All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, it carries. All right, thank you, Mike.
Thank you.
All right, so next conversation, night number 12 on our agenda is consideration, and I would say it's really a follow-up to our work session last week. So last week, we were all together for a little over three hours talking about a number of public safety issues. From that conversation, we said we wanted more time to take a deeper dive into the information that was presented to us because it was quite significant, as well as we wanted time to really think about some of the considerations that the chief had brought forward. And so that's what we're doing today, is we're following up on that conversation. Do you need me? I am, after this. Yeah, is that okay?
Bathroom break?
You need a break?
Could we do that for a couple minutes?
Yes, does everyone need a quick break? Okay, Chief, three minutes, we'll take a quick break, warm up our coffees. We have been going at it for a couple hours now, so, or one and a half, I should say, feels longer. So Commissioners, back in here in just a couple minutes. That it? Who we missing, just O'Connor? John Suave. Start calling him now. All right. Did Nate just run to his office?
Yes.
I think he's just white picking.
Several days.
Okay, all right, Chief.
Good morning, Mayor, Commissioners.
Good morning.
To your point, Mayor, this is a very succinct capitalization of the conversation that we had, it was about three and a half hours of what we're looking at regarding potential community and police relation investments. So I'll touch on the high points, there are seven of them. We discussed adding six potential community policing officers to the schedule, a staffing study, a comprehensive staffing study to include administrative, training, and detective personnel. We discussed an expanded crisis intervention team model, we've been using that model for years now, but looking at expanding it deeper and throughout the agency. We've discussed completing the violence assessment for Cure Violence. We talked about GVSU doing a study regarding best practices to include additional violence interruption programs assessments. We discussed protocols for benchmarks and metrics of those programs. And we closed out by discussing carrying the unencumbered balance of this year's money that was previously earmarked for improving police and community relations into next year's money. So any unspent monies would be available for next fiscal year. So I want to start by thanking everyone, last week's three and a half hour meeting, extremely comprehensive, the questions were on point and well-informed. I think it was very beneficial for the department to hear your issues, and I hope we did a good job answering your questions and concerns. So what we've provided you today is basically what you directed us to do, and I recognize you may have questions concerning specific items, and I'm here to answer those.
Great, thank you, Chief. I will open up for questions, and I will, I'll go ahead and start. Chief, and again, not that you need to do this today or urgently, but I would like maybe in the next couple weeks, a little bit more detail about our current detective unit, and the structure and the number, and some data, if you have it, on if we are backlogged, maybe even a little bit of a historic perspective over the last couple of years, where were we, where are we today, is it worse off, why, and what potentially some solutions are. I know you talked about really looking at the cases and moving some of those to the interns, and I would like just a better understanding of that if possible.
So certainly, Mayor, coincidentally, this morning at our 8:30 staff meeting, we met with detective division personnel to discuss how cases are assigned, to look at opportunities to redeploy some of those misdemeanor thefts, to take some of that workload off of our detectives who, by my opinion, are currently, are assigned more cases than would be best practices. Having said that, we can give you a quick turnaround on the number of cases detectives are carrying, the turnaround times on cases that are assigned. But I think most significantly will be the overall comprehensive staffing study. To your point, detectives, important role and capacity, but how that fits into the rest of the department in terms of the reports that are generated that require follow-up, I think a comprehensive study will be important, but we will get you the information quickly regarding the number of detectives, the historical perspective, cases, caseloads currently, and as opposed to caseloads in the past.
Great, thank you, thank you. And I, I've just heard that a couple times, so I want to just better understand where we are.
Well, it's a, it's a great question, because between family services, major crimes, general case, detectives, to their credit, work extremely hard. I do have some concerns that the caseload is greater than I would like it to be in terms of getting the best return on our investment and maintaining the health of our employees.
Great, thank you. So anything else, Commissioner Park, did you have your hand up?
Yeah, so I just want to thank you again, that was, it was a really impressive three and a half hours of information. And, you know, I continue to be weighing a couple of things. One is, how can we give support to the department, to honor the extra work that they're already doing, and also alleviate some of the staffing strain that, you know, that they're experiencing? But then also, how can we utilize those funds? We only have a million dollars, a million dollars isn't going to fix, you know, the problem. But how can we use them to innovate in ways that are going to truly enhance that relationship between the community department? So I want to achieve both of those outcomes, and I heard from a lot of people after Tuesday, and then I was intentionally about reaching out to some Latino leaders in the First Ward, and all of them said were really open to the, to these recommendations. And then they, but there was a general consensus among all of them, was that if the 21st Century Task Force is going to lean on staffing and deployment as their next point of discussion, why wouldn't we allow them to do that? Along with this, this study that's going to come out, or the study that is one, is actually item number two, that would truly show the gaps. Because, you know, to my first point, I want to fill the gaps, and I don't know if, I'm not sure whether or not six community police specialists would, would actually alleviate the strain that's feeling, so I want to... So I want to see that and be able to evaluate that against the data. And then I also am interested in, you know, Mark Washington isn't going to walk on water here in Grand Rapids, but I looked up online over the weekend, and in 2016, they just completed a very, very, very extensive community policing study. And if you go to their police department's website, all of those 21st Century recommendations around data, you can find it in Austin's website, you know? So I do think he's going to bring a lot of value, but I will say this, because their city commission is voting this week on adding 100 officers, because that was the recommendation of the study. And so we are absolutely going to have to reckon with that, because I'm almost positive that that study's going to come back and affirm what we hear anecdotally from your department. And so I think that Mark is going to bring a lot to that discussion. I'm very, very interested in that. To the other six things, I think that they're all things that we should move forward. The one thing I want to add is that the contract with Grand Valley, I think that, oh, let me get my notes here. I have three things that I discovered over the weekend that I think are, that I would love for them to research as well, that are evidence-based things from around the country that are more on the behavior health side and kind of jail deterrent strategies. So right now, we've really only discussed Cure Violence as a commission, as an evidence-based practice. So if Grand Valley's going to do some research for us, I'd love them to look into these other three things that I was made aware of. So that's the only thing I wanted to add on the rest. So I, what I heard from the community is they're very much open to this, and, but they wanted to see these other things happen, and I think that there's some wisdom to that. But I also want to say, up here, I think that we are going to have to reckon with staffing within the department. So that is coming online, as you look around at what happened in Austin is just one example.
Commissioner, do you want to share the three other?
Yeah.
Just so that we, the rest of us, know what those are, and we can look into them a little bit ourselves as well?
Yeah, so one of them is, is kind of a, is a jail diversion, pay-for-success, kind of focusing on housing and behavioral health, and that's in Denver. There's, in Chicago, they have a wellness and triage center, which, again, these are jail diversion tactics. I think that one of the best ways to improve community police relations is to say, I could take you to jail, but I'm not going to. I'm going to, I'm going to do this other tactic. And that's in Chicago. And in Denver and Chicago, that's, and we've discussed this, but I think that there's a model of it as pairing social workers with patrols. So I had an incident up in the second ward, and Barry Bryant got dispatched to the scene and was amazing, and spent an hour with a woman who really should have been, you know, he did everything that he should have done, but the woman went to the hospital the day before they released her. She's back out on the street. She's having a manic episode again. Dispatch can send, they can hear when I called, they could have heard that it was really not for a police officer in some respects. Now Barry, Officer Bryant did an awesome job, but he also spent an hour of his time. And then another car pulled up, and when they could be doing other things. And so I do think that, particularly when we think about resourcing too, I think that the hospitals and those other mental health folks could help us with money. You know, how can we turn this million bucks into three? And I think it's going to be linking with those kinds of, kind of things. So I can forward this on to the rest of the commission.
If you could share that with me as well, Commissioner, we'll start to take a look at those programs. To your earlier point, I completely agree that six officers, six community policing specialists will allow us to do some of what we do during the day in the evening, but it's certainly not a solution to our overall staffing issue. Austin's about four times our size, they're adding 100-plus officers. I'd be surprised if a consultant didn't come back and say that we're 10% lower than we should be staffed, and adding 29 officers would be a recommendation. I think a commitment that if we're going to go down the path of a consultant study, that we're also committed to following those recommendations as it pertains to manpower.
Yeah, I think that's fair.
Yeah, thank you. Other suggestions, Commissioner?
Yeah, I mean, I guess, you know, obviously I've been advocating to add more officers, community policing specialists especially, and, you know, if this comes down to waiting for recommendations from 21 CP, then I can't spend any money out of this funding on any program until we hear the whole report, if that's going to be the validity of the argument that you're making. And the idea that we're going to need to hire some more officers, most likely, if it takes a year or more to figure out how to do that, and we know that it's challenging enough to recruit officers to do the job and to try to build the diversity into the police force, I think we're foolish if we don't start that process now, because if not, we're just, again, kicking the can down the road, and we're waiting longer to try to do this. And if the recommendation is, at some point, two officers, or 10 officers, or zero officers, or 100 officers, we still know we need to recruit more people for the next class and try to build our force the way that, in the new and innovative ways that we're doing it. So again, if we're going to wait for 21 CP, then, you know, I'm going to come back to that. We're going to nickel and dime this money away here and there, and if it comes back that the recommendation is to hire officers, you got no money to do it anyway. So it's either we spend the money how we agreed to, or seemingly agreed to on last Tuesday, or then I want to just put a pause on all the spending from the fund and hold off.
To your point, Commissioner, it is a good reminder that, from the point you give us the green light to proceed, it's the better part of a year for us to hire, train, and get those individuals out in the capacity where they're working solo and contributing.
Chief, and maybe this is more for Eric. In the information shared with us, are we missing an option? Because wasn't there an option in the A3, which I left in my office unfortunately, to allow some additional funds for overtime, to free up time for evening and weekend hours?
Nope, there was an option in the A3. It was $250,000, if I recall correctly.
To provide some additional support right now, but also give us some more time to work through some of these recommendations and finish up the work?
Well, we talked about that during the work session, and I think there's a trade-off. So officers are already working a fair amount of overtime, and so having them work more overtime is counter, perhaps, to what we're trying to accomplish. So could we do it on a short-term basis, perhaps? But Chief, talk about that. But there is a trade-off to doing that.
I recognize that.
But to your point, there was that recommendation, and it would, and the whole idea of that was, we've tried not to have officers trained on overtime because it's very expensive. So, which means that we've trained on straight time, which means they're training during duty time. And so what this would do would be allow more duty time by having officers then train on overtime.
Okay.
Commissioner?
Oh, thank you. Commissioner Linney, or did you have a comment?
Yeah, I was just going to say, thank you, Chief, and to your team, and everyone who presented last week, and very robust and detailed presentation. To Commissioner O'Connor's point, I think it's valid that, you know, we may nickel and dime with the various recommendations. So I think, you know, it would be good to kind of go through some of the recommendations to talk about which ones you'd like to not move forward with, if we're not in a position to make a decision today. I will add, I think I am interested as well, Commissioner Repard, to hear what our new city attorney, I mean, excuse me, city manager would have to...
Making Anita nervous.
Right, right, right. What our new city manager would have to share in the feedback he'd provide. I just think his human resources background, I think his labor relations background will help him to understand this scenario, and not even knowing that they recently had gone through some study and had recommendations that they're implementing in Austin. So I think the mayor, everything that has been said, although it sounds like some of the comments are in opposition, I'm very supportive of, because I think the mayor's point about evaluating the detective's unit and the workload that's there, I think is another valid concern. And so just trying to understand comprehensively where we are, and I think, you know, you have a good point about if we go through a study, then we need to be prepared with what the outcomes will be. I don't think that every study you implement every single outcome, but I do think that if you are going through a process, that you should be prepared for whatever the outcome should be. So I agree with that as well. But I am concerned that if there is a greater need in other areas within the department, and we're making a decision about what seems to be the area that's getting the most attention, then are we doing a disservice to the department? So, you know, if my aunt's home was broken into, and because of backlog through the detective's unit, that isn't being investigated, but someone is, you know, out in the community playing baseball with children, if I'm weighing those options, I think I would want her to feel safe in her neighborhood, and having her investigation closed would be the priority that I would look at. And I think the lack of knowing all of those scenarios and issues that we're experiencing within the entire department is giving me pause about saying yes to community police specialists at this time, although you probably know that I find value in that, and I've shared that. And so, you know, I don't know how we can hear more, because we're hearing about the detective's unit, but what are the other units that we're not hearing about?
It's a point well taken, Commissioner. The need for the six additional community policing specialists doesn't diminish the need for additional detectives and additional first responders assigned to patrol.
Right.
So I think a comprehensive study, staffing study, to be done as quickly as possible. And it can, there can be a quick turnaround. I wouldn't recommend us doing it internally, the internal benchmarks that we would use, the officers per thousand, which hasn't really been accepted for good reason. The model that we've discussed is the 60-40, in terms of officers having time that is based on calls for service, and 40% of time that is based on proactive patrol and community engagement. Those metrics require some actual work in terms of putting the numbers together, requires some CAD data, some RMS data, they actually look at weather patterns, and then they make recommendations. So I've looked at other reports, not something we'd have the capacity to do externally, but there are some very good individuals with good reputations who do it externally. And I think if that was our intentions to do that, we could get a quick turnaround.
So what's a quick turnaround?
I think we put together an RFP in a matter of weeks, and closed the process relatively quick, and I think 90 days to 120 days for a turnaround on that study is reasonable, because the vendor would go into it with the RFP stating that that is the expectation.
Okay. And then, so to Commissioner O'Connor's point about kind of pressing pause on some of the other things, I think that we are trying a whole lot right now. And I would personally like to see us master some of the things we're implementing to see how effective they've become. And so what are your thoughts about pressing pause on some of the other recommendations as we go through this 90 or 120-day bidding and implementation process with the study?
Yeah, it's a great question, because my thoughts are that we need to close out some of our current programs before we go down and start pursuing other opportunities. So we've got a lot on the table. Personnel literally are taxed, I think, to the point that we now have overtime that goes unfilled, where we have overtime offerings, which is a premium rate, but officers choose not to work it because it's, we've reached a point of diminishing return. So to answer your question, I think before we pursue new or explore new opportunities, I think we need to close out the ones we're currently pursuing, decide what the return on our investment was, and if we want to continue with those investments or pursue new opportunities.
So, and I don't mean to hog, Mayor, but just want to get clarity. So a couple other questions, follow-up questions. Would the study include deployment and the strategies for deployment, and even recommendations about how dispatch helps or interacts with deployment decisions? And then would it also include scheduling? Because as I was mentioning before, you know, that's a concern for me, an 8:00 AM start time for the community police specialists. And so, you know, I'm hoping that that would also be included in the RFP. And then the other element that we talked about last week was if a decision is made to have this type of a position created, which I don't know if the commission wants to get in the business of directing a department that specifically, to be honest.
Right.
I don't know how many other departments were saying, we want this specific position listed and posted and filled in this department. And I don't want us to treat the police department like we're not treating the other because I'm about equity, and that's inequitable. So, but in the event that it is CPS, if we decide to do that, do we, I want to make sure that there are measures in place so that we can secure whatever those positions are, because I wouldn't want the transition that I think I heard happen before, where they transitioned from being a community police specialist to SRT. And I also want to make a comment. Last time I talked about SRT, and I want to be clear, I wasn't saying it negatively as much as I was just saying it changed into a different kind of job description.
Right.
Yeah.
So I'm going to grab your last comment first, if I could. To your point, Commissioner, we recognize that there's a lot more discussion when it involves public safety. And, but we recognize the spirit that that's done in. Obviously, people in the public, the community we serve, interact much more with us than they do with others, than with other departments, the nature of our assignments and our roles. I think it's very important to get this direction from policymakers. So we recognize how that input is delivered and the importance of it. Regarding the scheduling, the staffing and deployment study can cover just that, both the level of staffing and how individuals are deployed. Once you get into scheduling models, we start talking contractual issues. The schedules are dictated by contract. Having said that, the timing is good, and that we're getting ready to start contract negotiations. If that was a topic that both the union and the study recommended a fresh look at, I think that could be done. But I think the staffing and deployment would be instrumental in our first step.
Okay. And I do think that that should be a part of it, because I think the flexibility in a contract is going to be valuable as things are changing. So there was a time when we had five-day-a-week, eight-hour shifts. Now we're at 12-hour days, and so as times change, things may need to change as well, and scheduling is probably one of them.
And I think as the makeup of the department changes, I think that's been, become more of an issue internally. I think some of the officers who've been there a long time prefer the current model. I get a sense that maybe some of the new hires and people, or people looking at us as an employer, may prefer different opportunities in terms of scheduling. So I think that will be an important discussion to have.
Thank you.
Okay, Commissioner Kelly, next?
Yes, thank you, Chief. I really appreciate your openness to the conversation that we had last week, and overall, your openness to just the transparency, the conversations you've had out in the community and with us.
Thank you.
And I look forward to continuing those. I think maybe we've not had enough recently, just because we've had so many other big issues to deal with, you know, getting a city manager, and the marijuana issue, and so on. So apologize for that, but I agree that it would be great to do these comprehensive staffing study, that that ought to probably be the best practice moving forward. No model is perfect, we've read all about those, and the upsides and downsides, but it's certainly recommended as the best by ICMA and the COPS folks too. And I'm sure that you would agree that that is ideally the best. It might be a little more expensive, especially if it's a first-time going around, but hopefully a lot of the work you've done with the Kalia work is already, will be data that we can use to make those decisions. I think partly, I'd also love to look at some alternative delivery systems, as has been mentioned in some of those articles, where, for example, and I heard this in conversations with our neighborhood groups too, because they're feeling the tension between the desire, you know, obviously they love the community policing that we do, where they have access to an officer, but they also recognize that times have changed, conversations have changed, and we need to be sensitive about that. But one of the organizers was talking yesterday, who'd read this information, about having 911 do all of our non-emergency calls, and I think we've moved in that direction...
311.
Excuse me, 311, yes, pardon, to free up officers. Because one of, yet another organizer was the one who brought to my attention, or asked for information about what the city charter requires of us in terms of budgeting, and it's that not less than 32% of the general operating funds shall be appropriated for police services. And we are currently at 43%. And the question that came up to me is, how do we live within that budget? And of course, the budget certainly has grown, because our city's grown and our income tax base has, but the only idea that I can come up with is, given the fact that we are looking at likely having to hire more, would be this alternative delivery system. So I'd love to look at those options as well, whether it is, you know, how do we get more non-sworn staff involved? And I think that there's some healthy dynamics that can happen in that too, if you have some civilians within the department, so you have another perspective from the community. It's looking at almost like we would, diversity, diversity of thought, diversity... It's, it's looking at almost like we would diversity, diversity of thought, diversity of, of reactions. I often think about how we commissioners will go to our city managers and say, oh, this is what we're hearing from the community. And they don't always like to hear what we're hearing, but our goal is to provide that honest feedback so that we can create policy that is, is really healthy. So, I see some real benefit in, in thinking through that delivery system. So, just like Commissioner Lanier said, asked the question about deployment, can we also look at what's out there in terms of best practice with alternative delivery systems?
So, at our three-hour meeting, Commissioner, you asked a great question. You asked about the concept of community policing. This gives me an opportunity to reiterate, although there are officers who wear the community policing specialist title, you're right, it, it's a mentality that pervades the department and, and really is about everything we do. It's in our DNA. That being said, pairing civilian with sworn, there are a lot of models out there that are proving successful. Commissioner Repard, I think, is the ones that he's looking at, some of them I'm familiar with, and some of the models that I've looked at also make that recommendation. The challenge is, I see it, is just that they always pair a sworn individual with a non-sworn, because oftentimes, the line between what will require law enforcement intervention or police powers versus what a civilian can do is where the rubber meets the road. So, while I think pursuing those opportunities and looking at what is out there in terms of mixed models of delivery service is a great avenue for us to proceed, I think it's important to remember that most, all of those that I've, actually, all of those I've looked at do require a sworn presence to coincide with that non-sworn capacity as well.
Okay. I know we do some of that already in terms of abandoned vehicles and so on, but there are several examples here following up on traffic accidents and so on. So, I'd love to look at that. I also agree that we do need to push pause just because of the volunteer hours that are, we've all asked our task force to put in. And I know that they are now in that process of looking at community policing and deployment, and I would not want to jump ahead and then we'll hear from them like, you know, we're doing all this work and you're not going to pause and listen. And then, I think that there are other groups, not just the neighborhoods, that we all meet with once a month through our support from Stacy Stell, but also other groups out in the community that can help define what community policing is, that can give us input and that we ought to be listening to. We started out, you know, listening to Link, for example, with a twelve-point plan, and we've been working our way through that. So, I didn't, I wouldn't, I'd just love to hear or have you get input from other commissioners around this table about who those groups might be. And then, finally, I do not want to press pause on pure violence, because we have just, we're engaged in the assessment and want to at least move forward with that. I know that there are other models now that Commissioner Repard has brought up that we should look at, but, you know, to put another gap of time in there, I think, would be a mistake, recognizing that there are other reasons why we might want to push pause on the six officers, including the fact that we around this table can't make that decision. We have heard numbers from six to twelve to fifteen, and then today, zero to, to, to a hundred officers. And so, really, we don't know. You're the experts, we can get in expertise to help us figure that out. I think we need to be humble enough around this table to know we don't know, but we need to know.
So, I, I'll take that opportunity to weigh in with what I've looked at and other places I've been in, from what I see. So, this is my fourth budget cycle. And my first three years, I asked for ten additional officers, ten additional and ten additional. I, I think we're at ten percent below our, our ideal staffing level. I think three-thirty would be a healthy staffing model for us. And while I don't expect us to get there in one fiscal year, I think that would make some of the programs that we've been exploring sustainable. So, while I think hiring a half a dozen and earmarking them as community policing specialists would be a step in the right direction, I think as the city has grown since the economic downturn, as we've become more vibrant, as we look at alternative, at our opportunities along the riverfront that are conceivably draw thousands or tens of thousands of visitors to the city in ensuing years, as we discuss the marijuana legislation that is going to be upon us very quickly and the potential legalization statewide and the additional traffic that that will bring to the city. So, I think the commission is being very wise in taking a very holistic, long-term approach at a situation that hasn't developed overnight. The city did what they needed to do to get through an economic downturn that was unprecedented, did a great job in doing so. I've never seen a more lean organization, and to the credit of the men and women in the department, they've managed to maintain the service levels. But I, I am saying that I think it's, the timing is good for us to take that hard look and be now very strategic moving forward to ensure that type of success in the future.
Well, Chief, I really appreciate that, and, and especially you're talking about how we managed through the recession. And other than staff, I think only Commissioner, former Commissioner Bliss, now Mayor Bliss and I were around when we had the recommendations of a group called the Transformation Advisory Committee.
Transformation Advisors.
Transformation Advisors, and I don't know how many, there were twenty-some folks around that table. And it was, we were at a very critical juncture. I mean, it was survival for the city. But I don't think that this issue is any less important and might actually require that same sort of deep dive where we employ the services of folks around a table like that and defining what community policing is. And in looking at, how do we live within the budget? Because the fact that we are at forty-three percent is concerning when we are trying to address some of these other systemic changes. So, I recognize the need, but I also recognize the tension, and I would hate to ever go through another downturn, because we are in these peaks and troughs like we've never been, and now that we're in a global economy where we have to lay people off to the extent that we did. So, I want to just be cautious about that and maybe consider something similar to the Transformation Advisory Group, because this is no less important, an issue with the biggest department in the city.
Thank you. Commissioner Jones, did you have a question or comment?
Yep. Thank you, Chief. Thank you in particular for last week, for the information provided. I, I, I will say that per my statement on last week, I, I still am in a place of not being ready to support the addition of, of six officers for the stated duty of serving as a community police specialist. And I got a couple of reasons. One is, as has been mentioned throughout the morning from colleagues, I think there's wisdom in hearing what a third-party assessment or analysis will bear out in terms of the overall need for the department, whether it be additional officers and the detective unit traffic or whatever the case may be. And recognizing that we're going to have to make very tough decisions at that time once we find out where those positions are needed and where those dollars are going to come from. I, I do think that it would, it, it is a bit premature for us to move forward in the space of community policing, based on the fact that, as mentioned, we haven't heard from Twenty-First CP or the, I'm sorry, the Policy and Procedures Task Force. And beyond that, I think that, you know, the inclusion of, of the addition of six officers in that space ultimately won't get us to where we need to be in terms of efficiency around our policing in our city. Also think that, in the grand scheme of things, and I think you've alluded to this as well, Chief, that, you know, when we're talking about community policing, it really does come down to really working toward it being a system-wide or department-wide mindset or mentality, and not just something that six-plus officers within the department would, would bear that title and would work within the confines of, of, of community policing. But what is it, what's it going to take to engage the entire department to take up a mindset and recognize the benefits of community policing as a whole? I believe that what is needed is just a wholesale or a greater focus on overall culture change for the department. In my conversations throughout community, in all three wards, and with, with people of all hues and socioeconomic backgrounds, I think people see the value in committing to culture change as a whole and recognizing that in many ways, we're in, we're, we're in uncharted waters, simply because of what's happening throughout the, throughout our country. Yet, we don't want to penalize, you know, our department based off of what's happening in the national scene. But I, for one, I, I will tell you, Chief, and we've had conversations about this before, I can't help but to think about what has happened in the recent past and how that speaks to perhaps people's perception of our department. I think about, you know, the incidents of 2017, when we had, you know, young people, young African-American children in our community who were traumatized. And I know you don't take that lightly, and I especially don't take that lightly. And I don't, I don't think that there is an easy answer to that particular experience and making sure that we don't have that happen again, other than, you know, the, the training aspect, but also, again, this real commitment, this sense of urgency in having a culture change so that the entire department recognizes the importance of seeing people's humanity, regardless of the color of their skin or the zip code or where they live in the city. And I'm not blaming you, and I'm not blaming the department on where we are as a culture and a, and a, and a country around policing. But it's something that we're going to have to, you know, swim through and, you know, walk through that terrain together. And I'd much rather do it together than separate. And I just think it's going to get, it's going to get more difficult before it gets easier. And I think that, I don't think it's too much to ask for, for patience and for trying our best to do this thing right, based on the fact that I do not want us as a city to experience what we experienced in 2017 if we don't have to. I just, I don't want that, man. I don't want, I don't want to be the, on, on international and national news for that reason. And so, I am, again, very hesitant in, you know, greenlighting an effort that would fund community policing in, in many ways in a vacuum compared to the need to do it system-wide.
So, to your point, Commissioner, I'm confident that if we were to identify what our number one priority has been in the last couple of years, not only is it ensuring equitable outcomes for everyone regardless of how they look or what zip code they live in, but even equitable experiences. So, through our training, through our hiring, that has been our priority, and, and that is running throughout the department. We recognize the urgency of that and how important that is in terms of our credibility as a profession and, and how that touches each and every member of, of this city and how it's got to be our number one goal. That being said, I guess what I don't want us to do is wait for the perfect solution and let small incremental steps be pushed aside. So, with the risk of sounding, sounding contradictory to my previous input, while I think a holistic, widespread angle and lens and exploration of the staffing is important, I would encourage us to have the conversation about adding people in the interim is not necessarily a bad step, particularly if we're earmarking them as community policing specialists, because the input that we do receive throughout the course of the day, weeks and months from our neighbors and people in the neighborhoods, is that they appreciate the relationships that they have in the daytime. To your point, I agree that that mentality needs to carry through everything we do and everything we touch. So, it's a difficult discussion, and once again, I agree with you that it's probably going to get more challenging before it gets easier, but we've got the right people in place. We've got the right elected officials, we've got the right community leaders, I think we have the right people in the department.
So, I'm going to go to Commissioner Moody and then back to Commissioner O'Connor, but also want to share information that our city attorney just provided me, just so everyone is aware. On September eleventh, the team from Twenty-First Century is going to be back in Grand Rapids. They'll be doing a presentation before the full city commission with an update, and then they'll be having their final meeting and community gathering on October fifth. So, just so you all know what those dates are and that we will be getting, we as a body will have more time with Ron Davis and the team, but then also will be able to wrap up those final recommendations in the next six weeks. So, I just wanted you to have that information as well. So, now I'll turn to Commissioner Moody, and then I'll come back over here to Commissioner O'Connor, and then I'll try to give, hone in on, on a couple of recommendations, if we want to make any today, or if we want to table something and have this conversation at a later date. So, Commissioner Moody?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you, Chief, for all that you're doing for the officers doing the seat of Grand Rapids. I am in a place where I've had the opportunity to sit and talk with a number of people in the community over the weekends. I began Friday, Saturday and Sunday evenings discussing what community policing was and is. I know that this community policing, policing investment that you're putting in today is different than what it was twenty years ago, because I remember we had community policing in Grand Rapids and at the time of Hagerty, and then around the time when Chief Dolan came in, it kind of dissipated a little bit. Officers did have conversations with neighbors, and they were in good relations with neighbors. And I think that, I just need a little bit more clarity when you say community policing specialist. You know, what is the word specialist added to community policing? And I, I say that for a reason, because I had mixed reviews over the weekend. Some looked at it as a negative, some saw it as a positive. Those who saw it as a positive were those who were familiar with community policing from the old days. But when you put specialist on it, it, it kind of says, what are they going to be specialized in doing? Now, I'm in favor of, 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 of getting the six officers primarily because of the fact I read the package, and this is something that was, that you guys were asked to do before I got here, and you fulfilled that. I also feel, you know, within my own personal views on it, and that is that, you know, if we don't give you what you need sooner or later, we're going to set you up to fail. I think that's important to think about as well, too. But I need clarity on the, the specialist piece and what those, if those officers get the opportunity to become community police officers, what are their jobs and what would they be doing in the community?
So, and I, I know you know this, Commissioner, but I guess very succinctly, the community policing specialist serve really as a, a separate unit within the department. So, they, they attend a separate roll call at eight o'clock where they meet with their service area captains. They work Monday through Friday day shift, and the reason we do that is for the presence in the schools, the relationship with the businesses, which are, for, for a lot of them, daytime presences, and the relationships with the neighborhoods and the neighborhood associations. So, allowing us the six additional bodies would, would then give us the opportunity to replicate what we do in the daytime with seventeen with six in the evening. So, they're assigned to service areas, they answer to the service area captain. Generally speaking, we would prefer them not be first responders for calls. We want them to be able to take deeper dives and, and take problem-oriented policing and use it to resolve issues in their respective areas. So, that, that's-
Relationships with people in the community?
Very much so. The ability to sit down over a cup of coffee at seven o'clock and talk for an hour and a half without having to be pulled away for a non-injury accident or a residential alarm or the variety of calls that first responders handle importantly, but being tied up, or freed up, rather, from the constraints of the radio to be able to concentrate on relationship building.
So, these officers would not be walking the streets like they did in the past?
No, I, I know when you mentioned Chief Hagerty and a little bit of Dolan, different times call for different measures. I know from my experience, when crack was running rampant in some neighborhoods and some neighborhoods were unwalkable, different policing techniques took precedent. We're at a much better place as a community, we're in a completely different place as a profession. We're looking to build relationships, we're not looking to arrest our way to, to out of a problem. We recognize where we are and where we need to go.
One last question, Mayor. Are these six officers, are they going to be placed in first, second and third ward?
So, that's a great question. We actually talked initially about doing it with, using our service area model, which is north, south, east and central, which does give us the opportunity with the number six to correlate it with wards as opposed to service areas. So, while I don't want to set the precedent of making community policing specialists responsive, or responsible to a specific ward or commissioner, I think that by the time we were done deploying them and doing scheduling and figuring out how best to use six to affect the whole city, inevitably, they would be, there would not be a ward that would not- that would not go untouched or would not benefit from the addition of these officers. So every ward would see an increased presence in community policing specialists.
Okay, thank you. I'll go to Commissioner O'Connor, and then I'll try to figure out kind of the mind and consensus of the body. So Commissioner O'Connor?
Yeah, I guess I'll just, I'll start with the reiteration of that if, if the recommendation, if we're going to wait for a recommendation from the 21st Century Policing regarding strategies to work on community police relations, then I think we need to pause everything and hold off spending any money until we know what those recommendations are, so that we have the, you know, the most reserve available to implement any strategy with fidelity to the best of its ability. And I think that's, that's important, that's the, I think that is the physically responsible thing to do. I really appreciate, Chief, that you said you want 30 police officers. Like, I've been waiting for you to say that forthright, and you did today, and I appreciate you saying that, that, you know, there is no department in the City of Grand Rapids, which I think we are in the weeds this far, trying to manage the solutions that they use on a daily basis to achieve an outcome. We don't do it with the Fire Department, we don't do it with the Water Department, we don't do it with any department, but we're this far into the, into the weeds. Most departments, we say, this is the outcome, I want X to happen, and here's the resource bucket we give you, and you, you know, you're the professional, you do that. And so it is a little scary that we're in the weeds this far on some of these solutions. Now, I know that this is a different scenario, right, than, than a lot of other departments that we're trying to, to navigate. You know, I also hear the idea that, you know, Commissioner Jones, like, I don't think any of us want an outcome that looks, that is negative. I don't think any man or woman that puts on a blue uniform every day, gets up, goes to work, and thinks, I want to, like, they're all, no one wants to have an incident that comes to community attention. And so while we've had incidents in 2017 that rose to that level, I'm sure that every officer, we haven't had one since, and it's like any road to recovery, that you're getting to a point of, like, you have to start somewhere with one step first. And so we've been X number of days without something that's come to that level of attention, and that I think that's progress, so these people are doing that. So I'll just, I'll end here, just, I just, I don't want to spend any of this money unless, until we're done then.
I appreciate that. Any other final comments before I try to get Commissioner Cuss?
Yes, I would just suggest that when staff put this agenda together for us, and Eric, thank you for sending this to us in advance, so that we kind of knew how we were going to lay it out, they had to make a determination on how to put this package together. It could have been that they would separate out the cure violence piece with the assessments, which would be number four, five, and six, they go together. But it happened to get wrapped up in this, because we had this conversation around cure violence. Now, we've had it for five years, and we've embarked, we've allocated the 7,500 for the assessment, and that is underway. So I really hate to push pause on that, we're going to get kicked back from the community and for good reason. And, and the other thing, I think after listening to John Wukowski last week about the crisis intervention model, and then getting feedback from Network 180, I know I got some additional feedback and a report, which I think the whole commission ought to get and read, in addition to the fact that we're recognizing that so much of our, you know, a good portion of those who go in the hospitals, for example, they said 10% that are coming in the emergency room are people with mental health crisis problems, and John just made a really compelling argument for getting started with that. So I would love, I would like to move ahead with, with, with the crisis intervention model, with the cure violence work, and with the chief's request for proposals to secure consultant services for the purpose of conducting that staffing and deployment model. So that's where I'm landing.
Yeah, can I, I need to ask for a little clarity, because I feel like we already made a decision as a body and took a vote to move forward with the initial assessment with cure violence, and that that assessment is currently underway.
Yeah.
Like, that work is currently being done, my understanding.
Well, it's under contract, so, and we're working to schedule a date where it will be done in September.
But, but that's already come before this body, and we've already approved it.
Yeah.
So I, again, I don't necessarily feel like we need to backtrack on that, when we as a body have already spoken, I think, very clearly, even earlier this year during the budget session, telling the chief that exactly what Commissioner Kelly just said, that this has been a priority for years, and we need to move forward and determine next steps.
This was more of a statement of affirmation, not a decision point. So this is a, we've, what we've endeavored to do with the discussion about community and police relationships is put together a package. So the cure violence assessment is part of that package. And so when we put together this, we bundled everything in the package in there. Now, do we need to have paragraph four in there before, again? Perhaps not. So, but nothing here is saying that we're not intending to proceed with that assessment.
Yeah, it's just confusing to me.
It's under contract, and we're working to schedule dates now.
Yeah, and it's a contract that we already, as a body, have approved. So to me, that, that piece was confusing to me. The second thing I just want to add to what Commissioner Kelly said, and this came to light more so even after our conversation last week, is that, you know, under investment three, there's a lot of work, just so everyone knows, there's a lot of work being done right now in the community around crisis intervention. The county is actively involved, our department is actively involved, there are other partners in the community working on this. I don't, I don't, until we have from the community a model that they're recommending, whether it's the 23-hour crisis center or, or a hybrid of that in partnership with our county, Commissioner Kelly and I heard from Commissioner Steck, who's been working on this at the county and in partnership with Network 180, and they're trying to figure out funding as well, I feel like that is even a little premature, knowing that the chief and John, you're already talking about this, and you're not in a place right now to even, yet, I would say, to make a recommendation on our role and partnership in that work moving forward. So again, I, you know, I think that's...
If I, if I could understand what you're saying, if I could suggest that what we're trying to do is here with this one, is say, you're endorsing that we're doing this work. So the police chief and the fire chief and their staffs are both involved in the coalition that you talked about, and we're not recommending a model, because it's going to be a model developed by the partners. And, but we want to be part of it, and what this affirms is, yes, you want us to do this. So it's your official action saying, yes, please get on this, please do this, please be part of this process, and keep us posted, is how I, how we intended that.
Okay, well, I guess it's a little confusing then, because they're considered investments. So, so I guess, going back to what Commissioner Kelly said, so am I hearing a recommendation from you to continue on with this work that we're already doing in partnership with a number of other folks in the community? And then you want to pull out the deployment piece, or are you saying, let's hold off on that until we hear from 21st Century Policing?
Yes, I want to pull out number one and move forward with the staffing and deployment review, because I, you know, we're already hearing from that task force that those are issues that we need to do a deeper dive on, and we heard that as well from Ron Davis. So...
And, and just to clarify, based on Eric's comments, as a body, I'm assuming that we are supportive of the chief and John to continue to work with the county and our other partners around looking at potential models for crisis intervention. My, is everyone supportive of that ongoing conversation with the county that, that is happening with the task force that is already in place, that the Network 180 and county commissioners are involved in? Commissioner?
So I'm not in opposition of that, but I do agree with Commissioner O'Connor's point, that I don't think we can have it all of our ways, you know, so something has to give. If we want to press pause on this one issue under the guise of, let's look at this comprehensively to, and if it's something like the, the cure violence study assessment, excuse me, you know, I would say that that's underway, and I think the city manager has spoken to that. I think having Grand Valley look at multiple evidence-based models, including what Commissioner Ruppert is suggesting today, to be a part of that, I think that's underway, so that could probably, because those are studies, so you're not spending anything. But I think if we're looking at buying into anything, it, it should be a part of the comprehensive package that comes after a full assessment of the department, that includes staffing, deployment, and things of that nature. So I, I agree with what he's saying. I think we, we are going to be in a position where we're nickeling and dining, so if we're looking at this list, I just think what's listed here under the anti-violence model, 500 to a thou, to a million dollars, wouldn't be spent, because we don't know what that model will be. And part of this, what the assessment should continue, but agreeing to what the model will be shouldn't occur until after there's this more comprehensive view. And Chief, I don't know if you've, if you already have someone in mind to do the departmental review, but I'm just wondering if there is a way to bring in Grand Valley, since they're already assessing in one way, to do this other piece. I don't even know if this is something they could do, but I'm just thinking, it would be great to kind of have everything, what comes from cure violence, what comes from what Grand Valley is doing, whatever Commissioner Ruppert and then other commissioners are suggesting, to all be in one place, one report, so that we can look at one thing to fully see the big picture.
Right.
And Chief, can I just add on, just to clarify, and, and Commissioner, I couldn't agree more, but I think we're in the same place with the, with the work being done around what does a crisis intervention look like?
Sure.
That it's, it's just premature, that we're not looking to invest any funds at this time, because we don't know as a community what that potential model will be.
Right.
I don't want to stall those conversations, but I also think it's premature to say that we're going to invest money in it, when we don't know what that looks like, or, quite frankly, the cost.
So I would, I would add, I would consider that the same as the cure violence assessment. So you go through whatever those discussions are, and then whatever the outcome should be a part of this comprehensive report of everything.
Yeah, thank you. I, I think that's a good point.
So to make sure that I understand, to both your points, we're in the midst of the crisis intervention model and continuing to both the training and the relationship with Network 180, and we continue to expand that. That has no direct financial ramifications, that's a relationship that we've had for, for a long time, and that we continue to strengthen, and we're continuing to explore new opportunities. Obviously, if any of them do have financial implications, we would bring that before this commission. Regarding the cure violence, as the interim city manager mentioned, that contract has already been approved, but the work has yet to start. To answer your final question, Commissioner, I, it would be nice, in terms of comprehensive, to have everything presented in one package. I don't believe GVSU has done a staffing and deployment study.
Okay.
I've looked, because I've been looking since our last, our meeting last week, there are a couple of big players that are really kind of the gold standard. I would shy away from using ICMA. They came for a very distinct purpose, and it produced a very distinct outcome based on the financial constraints at that time. For the same reason, I wouldn't recommend using the International Associations, the chiefs of police, to come in and make the recommendations. There are groups that will have the credibility and the objectivity to make recommendations that'll be, I think, accepted by all parties.
And could they then provide their portion to Grand Valley, who could then bring all of those pieces together into one?
That's a great, yes. So once we, once we know what the recommendations are for staffing and deployment, that can be an overlay to any community violence programs or any intervention models that we look to, to go down, and they would want that information to use in doing their staffing study.
Sounds good, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, so Commissioner Kelly, and then I'll try to button this up, because we have one more walk-on item.
So Chief, probably between you and all of your contacts and even 21st Century Policing, which probably had the same question come up in other communities, you would be able to give us some, or find some places, some, some groups that could do this kind of assessment, I assume?
The Staffy Insta and...
Yeah, the Staffy.
Yes, Michigan State University has done some. Alexandra Weiss, who we brought in when I first got here, and take a look at how we were organized, has been involved in some. And there's also a group out of California that has done about 800 different municipalities. So there are some, some examples out there that could, with a relatively quick turnaround, produce exactly what we're looking for.
And I think the one that did Austin's was a consulting firm called Matrix. And so I think, I think you're right, there's a handful who are seen as experts and know how to do this, and have a methodology already in place that could, as the chief said, probably turn it around relatively quickly. So Commissioners, Commissioner?
I just want to make a motion, Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we approve the items number two through seven for the potential investment, which is a mix of investments that was presented by interim city manager DeLong. It's, again, it's items two through seven that we move forward with that, with those investments.
Support?
Okay, so I have a motion and support on the table. Any other comments? And then I'll call the question on this. Any additional comments? Going once, going twice? All right, all those in favor of approving two through seven, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Aye.
Okay, it carries. All right, Commissioners, now, I would like to ask for a motion to suspend the rules, and this is to bring forward a resolution for an employment agreement for our next city manager. Can I get a motion to suspend the rules?
So moved.
All right, all those in favor of suspending the rules, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? It carries, all right. And this is a resolution electing the city manager and approving an employment agreement for the same. So all of you should have the attached resolution. This is to elect Mr. Mark Washington as city manager, appointment becoming effective October 1, for a three-year term expiring December 31, 2021. City, our city attorney has taken the lead on this and has gone back and forth in negotiations. City Attorney, you want to add anything?
No, just that he's very excited and ready to get here and get started.
Okay, so he's excited and ready to get here. After this is approved, we'll move forward on solidifying it, and then Commissioners, I already sent you a draft of an onboarding. Any additional feedback? If you could get that to me this week, and then I'll work on finalizing that and having a conversation with him. So Commissioners, any comments, questions about this? All of you've had a chance to read through it. All right, I'll call the question. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? It carries. All right, Commissioners, so we have, let me run down a couple of things for today, because we have a full agenda. We have Economic Development Project Team at 12:30 downstairs in 601. Commissioner Jones, I take back my comment to you. It will be Commissioner Moody and Commissioner Ruppert joining me for Economic Development Project Team. And then at 1:30, we are back in here for a 90-minute work session to get additional information on street lighting infrastructure. All of you should have been given a packet of information leading up to today's work session. Again, this is to get the information, this was a topic we talked about during the budget process, where we felt we didn't have enough detail. And then our city attorney has asked that we cancel and reschedule the performance review, so that should be taken off your schedule. I think Laura already did that. And then we are back in here tonight at 7:00 PM for our evening meeting. Commissioner Ruppert?
And I told Wim Cat that I would say Housing Now discussions begin tonight. The other way Ministry is 7:04 West Fulton, 6:00 we have food and childcare provided. I got a sneak peek on Friday, and it's fantastic what they're going to do. So please come, show up, there's four sessions this week.
Great, and we'll, Amy, maybe we can get a reminder out about that. You already did, of course you already did it. Okay, wonderful. All right, Commissioners, with that, we are adjourned, and I'll see you, oh, Eric, am I right, there's lunch downstairs?
In the executive office.
In the executive office.
Yep.
So grab a bite to eat, the two of you, I'll meet you in Economic Development Project Team. Awesome, all right, we're adjourned.